My name is Gabe Fritz and I'm the Director of the Office of Housing and Community Development. Got several team members here tonight with us whom I'll introduce in just a second. But I appreciate you all coming out tonight for our third public meeting to review the 2017 Action Plan for HUD and entitlement funds. This is an opportunity... Good evening, how are you tonight?
Good.
Oh, no, you're right on time. We're just getting started. This is an opportunity to provide input to our response to the draft program year 2017 Action Plan for HUD. And the entitlement grant funds that we received as a community, which include CDBG, or Community Development Block Grant Funds, Home Investment Partnerships, the Home Program, Emergency Solutions Grants, which is ESG, and then Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Funding, which we also call HOPWA. So as we talk tonight, we're going to be using those acronyms over and over again. If anybody has any questions at any time, feel free to raise your hand. This is a pretty informal process. So tonight, comments can be made here publicly, so if you'd like to speak tonight, there's a sign up sheet at the front door, or you can submit via regular mail or email. We'll have all that contact information at the end of the presentation as well, and it's probably up on that table for you as well. And that comment period will be open until August 1st, 2017. So I do, at this point, want to take just a second... Let me grab another slide from here. I do just want to take a second to introduce the rest of the folks from our team that are here. So Melinda Breslin's up front here, she's operating the PowerPoint. Linda is a member of our team and just recently joined us as the Grant Coordinator. So this particular plan and this particular work is really the focus of her job duties, among others. So we're really glad to have Melinda on board as a part of the team. And we're also joined tonight by Curtis Daugherty, who's the Assistant Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development. So Curtis is back in the middle of the room. And then we're also joined by Andrew, also known as Andy Bates, and he is a member of a sister agency within Louisville Metro called the Office of Resilience... Resilience and Community Services? I always get resilience and resiliency confused. Where he's an executive administrator, and Andrew will be speaking to you all in a little bit, particularly about the outcomes that their division had with these funds last year and what they're planning to do this year. And then Curtis will be addressing even a little bit to talk a little bit more about a Choice Neighborhoods Initiative that will be integral to our action plan moving forward over the next few years for the Russell Neighborhood. So this action plan, again, covers four major sources of funding. So we mentioned the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnerships, Home. These two funding sources are directly administered by the Office of Housing and Community Development. Folks may have heard of CDBG funds before, or Community Development Block Grants, and they're used for housing, to help provide a suitable living environment, for expanded economic development opportunities, for public facilities. Home funds are used for real estate development, for acquiring, developing, and/or rehabbing affordable housing, and providing direct rental assistance. So those two pools of money, again, are administered pretty directly through our shop. And the last two funding sources, the ESG and the HOPWA grants, are directly administered by the Office of Resilience and Community Services. And so ESG funds are used to reach out to those that are living on the street, for the support of emergency shelters, to rapidly rehouse homeless individuals and families, and to prevent homelessness. The HOPWA is pretty self-explanatory. That funding provides housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, and specifically low-income persons with AIDS, and supportive services for those folks and their families as well. This is about... Let me see, so last year, this was about $14 million. We'll get into this year's numbers in just one second. Again, so these are the current program year numbers, pretty close to what the numbers were in prior years. As you can tell, the large majority of this funding comes in the form of Community Development Block Grant Funding. It's about $10 million, Home's a little shy of $2.5 million, HOPWA a little north of $1.5 million, and then ESG is just shy of $1 million. And then the next slide really just provides a graphic representation of that. Sometimes it's just nice to have a little pie chart that shows you exactly how that's broken down, but again, it reiterates the fact that the CDBG funding represents the largest portion. Looks a little out of focus. I don't know if it needs to go closer or further, why? How do you focus this? Is this...
Curtis has already given him his best shot.
Okay. Well, CDBG's 72%, the Home's 16%, ESG is 7%, and the HOPWA's 5%. I don't know if folks can read that. Okay, thank you, Melinda. Throwing this a little bit out of whack, I'm sorry to mess up your previous work there, Curtis. I'm going to scoot over and Curtis is just going to come up and speak for a few minutes about the Russell Choice Neighborhoods Grant, just give a broad overview of that, and talk a little bit about how that impacts the work we do on our shop.
So this December, Louisville Metro Government, working in close conjunction with our partner Louisville Metro Housing Authority, received a $29.5 million Choice Neighborhoods Initiative Grant. This was the result of many years' planning efforts and some preliminary planning and action grants from the HUD Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, including a planning grant for $400,000 and a $1 million action grant that has been received in recent years to help spur activities in planning and community organizing, leading what turned out to be to a very successful application for these funds to transform the Russell Neighborhood. This whole activity is sort of outlined under a plan called Vision Russell, and if you want to see more information about this plan, you can go to the site visionrussell.org, and that can provide some overview about the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative and activities related to community outreach, planning, and economic development. Again, this project is under the leadership of Louisville Metro Housing Authority, and it's going to seek in transforming the Russell Neighborhood with a number of initiatives to both transform the available housing, encourage economic development, and revitalize infrastructure. Specifically, the Vision Russell efforts will focus on the following key components. The first is tearing down and redeveloping the Beecher Terrace public housing development into a sustainable, multi-generational, mixed-use, mixed-income development consisting of 640 units and a variety of formats, serving both local folks and people of other incomes as well. Developing one-for-one all-site replacement housing for the current residents of Beecher Terrace, and some of those relocations have begun already. I believe that as of yesterday, there were 140 families that are already relocated from the development. Increasing safety and security in the neighborhood, recreating a strong retail and service centers in the neighborhood via a number of investment efforts, improving educational health outcomes for Beecher Terrace and Russell residents, and improving community connectivity. It's anticipated that this $29.5 million grant from HUD will leverage over $200 million in private sector and other public sector funding. And one key part of that contribution has the direct relationship to the activities we're talking about tonight. Louisville Metro has pledged, over the course of the next five years, $15 million in CDBG funding to support infrastructure redevelopment efforts as part of the Vision Russell and Beecher Terrace redevelopment plan. That's going to have some profound impacts on the neighborhood, including creating new street connectivity, helping transform existing park space, and other infrastructure needs that will facilitate the redevelopment of the Beecher Terrace project and supporting resources for the neighborhood. But one thing this will have an impact on is in years past, we have used a significant portion of CDBG funding to support other, what are called, public facilities and infrastructure projects. So examples for this in recent years have included redevelopment of the Goodwill Site on East Broadway, redevelopment of some of the infrastructure at the Louisville Urban League Site, rehabilitation at the Portland Museum, as well as a number of park and streetscape infrastructures and investments across the city in facilities serving low-income neighborhoods. Because of our commitment going forward in the next few years, those CDBG funds will no longer be available for the foreseeable future for those other types of public infrastructure and community facilities investments. So you oftentimes hear folks say, "Well, hey, maybe CDBG can help insert new organization here, redevelop their facilities." And due to this commitment, those funds will be available going forward. So we are excited by the ability of Louisville Metro to contribute to this really important investment in conjunction with the Housing Authority and our development partners throughout the city, including both nonprofit and for-profit entities that are working in close consultation with the city on this project, and we're excited that we can help support this work via our federal entitlement funds.
Thank you, Curtis. And just in closing in the conversation about the Choice effort, the grain of $30 million and then additionally the commitment of $15 million of CDBG funding over the next five years from the city will be leveraged in, you know, probably what we think will end up being $200 or $300 million of total investment across the neighborhood. And one of the really important things to understand about the Choice Neighborhoods effort in terms of programming is that previously, that effort has had different names in earlier iterations of funding cycles from HUD, and it's been known as Hope Six. So there are some local examples, most notably probably of which is Park Duval. And typically, those efforts have really been focused on like the footprint of where the public housing was, right? The goal was to kind of replace the existing public housing, but the funding is really focused on that footprint. Park Duval was a pretty big footprint, but this effort is not just about Beecher Terrace, it's about the entire Russell Neighborhood, and thus Choice Neighborhoods. And the name of the program and the initiative kind of lends itself to that definition and that description, and that's why this effort and why the Vision Russell work and document is so important, as we look to transform the neighborhood rather than just the footprint, right, of a building. And that's why it's such a worthwhile investment for the city and for the community. So we'll talk a little bit, this is kind of the more boring stuff, frankly, about how we get the funds, and it's a formula basis. And so HUD has a formula that they assign to each, what's called, participating jurisdiction to get the grant funds that Metro is on the receiving end of. But to get that designation, to get that allocation, you have to complete a five-year consolidated plan, so you put together a five-year plan that says, "Over the course of this amount of time, we think you're going to give us this amount of money, and this is the work that we're going to do, and this is the impact that we're going to make across the community." That's broken down into an annual action plan, which is what we're talking about tonight. And then, so that's at the beginning of the year, and then at the end of the year, we have to do another annual report that's called a CAPER. And the CAPER basically captures all the work that we've done and ensures that we align with what we set out to do at the beginning of the year. So all of that is available on our website. I'm not even going to try to read, it's already gone, I'm not even going to try to read it, but hopefully we have some documents in the back that'll give you that website address information. Here's a little kind of infographic to take a quick look at really the specific process of what I've just lined out. Looks like some of us really did screw this thing up. So what you can't see on the left, it's cut off a bit, but that says five-year consolidated plan, so the last plan was updated in 2015, and it'll last up until 2019. So we do an assessment of affordable housing, community development needs, I think the five priorities, and then put together that five-year plan, send it to HUD for their review and approval. Once they review and approve that, you can see these arrows that kind of indicate the direction of flow. Then they send us that annual formula allocation. We put together an annual action plan every year that says this is, and ostensibly, you know, in theory, each year is about one-fifth of that work. It doesn't always break down that neatly, but on an annual basis, we describe what we're going to do, how we're going to meet the goals for that year. We send that plan back to HUD, so that's where we are in the process right now. And part of that plan approval process is to have public meetings for us to not only present, but to offer the time for folks to make comments as well, to ask questions. Once HUD reviews that, and at the end of this presentation, we'll kind of have a timeline for all of this, so it lays out what this process has been over this year, and what the remaining dates in terms of deadlines are for this program year. So then they award the funds to us at the end of the year, we do that report, that CAPER, that shows that we did what we set out to do, and then the whole process repeats We talked a little bit about the priorities for these funds. We really try to align what we do in this department across the enterprise, across Metro Louisville, and we try to align all the work that we do to the strategic goals and objectives that we have as a city. And certainly, in this work, we strive to deliver good customer service, good fiscal -- good customer service, ensure fiscal integrity, we want to encourage job creation, and we want to invest in people in our neighborhoods. And if you look at the strategic plan that the mayor has, you'll see that we are very involved in three of those goals. Goal 12 is one that we own wholly, which is to increase and preserve affordable housing choices throughout Louisville Metro. Goal 15 permeates the work we do as well, which is to increase inclusion and create equity. And then Goal 16 is to decrease abandoned structures, and although we don't actually -- we're not, we don't actually take structures down, we allocate some of our funding to a sister agency that does take down abandoned structures strategically. And then finally, create plans for a vibrant future. So you can see our consolidated plan goals in the yellow box, again, that's our kind of five-year broad strategic plan for what we want to do with these annual investments of HUD dollars. Affordable housing is kind of at the top of that list, community development, homeless services, small business development, and then non-homeless special needs. So those have been identified in our consolidated plan, and then therefore need to be addressed pretty regularly on an annual basis in our action plans. I do a quick rundown of some of the accomplishments from our most recent program year, and then I think I'm going to have Andy to talk a little bit about, we'll switch gears a little bit. Remember we said that the home and CDBG work is the stuff that we focused on? Then we'll switch gears a little bit and let Andrew talk about the work that our brothers and sisters in Resilience and Community Services did. So I'm not going to spend a whole bunch of time on these accomplishment slides, but it is important to talk about the work that we've accomplished. 32 DPA, so our Down Payment Assistance Program is available across the city. There's no specific neighborhood or zip code that are eligible for that work, it's just income-based.
Where do you find that HOPWA grant, or, I don't know?
And it's across 13 zip codes. I couldn't hear you, the question, where do we find one?
Where does one find out how to get to the Down Payment Assistance?
Down Payment Assistance? So if you go to our website, so I always start, because once people start talking to me in backslases and all that stuff, it's over for me. So if you just go to LouisvilleKY.gov, you start on the homepage, there's a tab for departments, I think it says All City Departments, and there's also a search bar or a search window where you can just type in Housing and Community Development, you can type in Down Payment Assistance, but if you go to the All Departments area and go to Housing and Community Development, you're going to see a couple tabs on the left. One is Homeowner Resources, and one is Homebuyer Resources. You go to the Homebuyer Resources, that's going to be the information. And again, I've got cards available, and I'll leave them out up on the back table, and I assume our team members do as well, and it has our, that broad, general, generic website address that'll get you through the specific pages. Excuse me. We, just to tick off a few of these other accomplishments, 10 homeownership units, we're having through our Chodo work. So Chodo is another acronym, again, a community housing development organization. It's typically a smaller nonprofit that has very specific guidelines about not only the work that they do, but work composition. I always like to think of Chodo's as grassroots nonprofits, and they do great work across the community, serve low, moderate income households, and are vital partners, and by, really by regulation, a certain portion of the work that we do needs to be done by them. We, almost 250 households were provided with home repairs, rehab, emergency repair, et cetera. We have a home repair and rehab program that has several different areas of focus in terms of whether it's roof replacement, or emergency repair for mechanical systems, et cetera, across specific neighborhoods in some cases, and then county-wide, or city-wide in others. And then about 2,800 folks received homebuyer education or homeownership education and council services, so we provide funding for agencies that provide those services. We do not provide those services directly, we partner with agencies across the community that then deliver those services. And we also invested in a total of six rental construction and/or rehab projects across the community as well, that created 760 units of housing, and those, again, are across multiple zip codes. Is there more? Good, none of mine. All right. Well, that's great, that's good, because this is supposed to be the bragging part. So almost 60 units were demolished, again, we've had a lot of conversation about vacant and abandoned properties in our community, and demolishing lighted structures is a really important tool, an art tool belt, and a really important investment in the work that we do. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense in some cases, we're working on a block and we're investing in an apartment or a single-family home, and there's two or three vacant and abandoned properties in between those investments that really adversely impact the investment that we're making and the stuff that's around, right? So it's a good strategic investment for us. Curtis talked a little bit about the investments in community centers, parks, and libraries. So we were able absolutely to invest in Windup Park, Shelby Park, West Louisville Outdoor Learning Center, Choney Park, Houston Quinn Park. So for anybody that's interested, Houston Quinn Park, I think is in the 4,000 block of South First Street. We're having kind of a ribbon-cutting ceremony Saturday, Friday morning for that, the mayor will be there, and we'll be celebrating the investment of CDBG dollars into that park for a spray ground and new restrooms. Well, restrooms, they didn't have bathrooms at that park previously. And Curtis talked a little bit about the Portland Museum and the Urban League, as well as LCC's Family Development Center. And we also invest community development block grants in into micro, what we call micro biz, and other small business loans. So we had about 30 micro enterprise loans to local businesses, and then supported training and TA assistance for about 175 folks as well, and then acquired a commercial property for West Louisville Learning Center. So with that, there we go. I'm going to invite our friend Andrew Bates to come up and talk a little bit about the work that the Office of Resilience and Community Services does as a part of this larger effort. I'll move over and greet you. Hi, see Andrew. All right, thanks.
Hi, I'm Andy Bates with Resilience and Community Services. And so just to describe a little bit about the relationship between our departments, several years ago, the Gabe's office in Develop Louisville and our department were part of the same agency. And then as a part of a reorganization, the programs were split off, and essentially, the way I describe it is that the functions that are more related to property, to real estate, went to Develop Louisville, and the ones that are more focused on direct client assistance went to Community Services. And where there was some kind of gray area, we could go either way, would be the functions like emergency home repair and weatherization, where they are working directly with clients, but they're working with them on property-related issues, and those also went to Develop Louisville. But what stayed in our department is a lot of those direct client services, and so the funding that comes in through Develop Louisville for Emergency Solutions Grant, HOPWA, and the public service category of CDBG is then used by our agency. Some of that funding is used within the department to fund our programs that provide permanent supportive and rapid rehousing for formerly homeless people, and that's administered directly by our department. But a lot of the funding is granted to nonprofit organizations in the community through sub-recipient grants. And so every year, we have a solicitation process where we announce that we're going to be awarding these funds, and agencies submit applications, and we have a panel that reviews the applications and scores them, and makes a recommendation to Metro Council as a part of the city's budget process to say, "These are the organizations that we think should receive this funding." And of course, we have to ensure that their intended uses match the requirements of the grants. And then Metro Council generally, and this year certainly, approves their recommendation. And then what we were doing in my office before I came over here is getting all those grant agreements routed and approved so that organizations can start submitting a payment request to get reimbursed for their expenses. And so we generally support the same programs every year. There will occasionally be some changes. When we score the applications, any extra funding goes to the highest-scoring agencies, but generally, there has not been a lot of turnover in the agencies from year to year. As long as programs are being done successfully, then they generally continue to receive the same funding. We have not had any major shifts in the amount of Emergency Solutions Grant, or CDBG Public Service, or HOPWA over the last few years, and so as long as agencies are doing what they're supposed to do, then they generally get, you know, the same funding again the next year. Occasionally, some agencies will decide they don't want to do the programs anymore for whatever reason, having to do with their agency's larger strategic goals, and then that funding becomes available to get redistributed to the other agencies, or a new agency that applies might take their place in receiving that funding. And so I'm involved in that panel process that awards the grants, but that's generally how, what our department does related to the funding that we're talking about this evening. related to the funding that we're talking about this evening. My department's bigger and does, and also has a lot of other programs that are unrelated to this, you know, volunteer programs, the senior nutrition programs like Meals on Wheels and a lot of other activities as well. But in the interest of time, tonight I'll just describe, you know, those sources of funding where we collaborate with Gabe Stephen Develop Louisville. And so let me talk a little bit. I think that Eric Friedlander, who's, who's my boss's boss, wanted us to talk a little bit about specifically the resilience piece. Was that right? Was that a?
He sent me cover slides.
Okay.
If you could just back up.
Yeah, and that's it? That's the, okay, so. Okay, let me, let me talk a little bit about the, just briefly, about the resilience and what that means. So the, the city Louisville competed for and received some funding from the Rockefeller Foundation run group, which is called One Hundred Resilient Cities. So the Rockefeller Foundation started this group called One Hundred Resilient Cities, which is designed to help major cities be able to withstand shocks and stresses, either economic, natural disasters, things of that nature. Basically make it to where cities are tougher and can take, can recover if something bad happens. And so that could be a natural disaster, like, you know, a flood or an earthquake, or it could be an economic shock, like if a major employer shuts down, things of that nature. And then you've got long-term stresses, which can be high crime, or poverty, or air pollution. And so how, how does cities strengthen themselves to better resist that? And so we've now joined this cohort with cities from around the world that are part of this, this group. And the cities all kind of learn from each other and share resources and sort of best practices on how to become more resilient. And so when, when they came to Louisville, it was really identified that in Louisville, one of the major barriers to our city being more resilient is economic inequality, racial and economic injustice, and concentrated poverty. And that those things make us less resilient. And so a good example of this would be, everybody knows in Hurricane Katrina, the people who got hurt the hardest were the low income people in, in certain neighborhoods. And the limited resources that those people had made it a lot harder for them, and therefore the city, to react, to be able to bounce back. And so how do we strengthen our community in Louisville? And so the, based on that analysis, the thought was, well, in order to help us better prepare ourselves for whatever shocks and stresses may come down the road, we've got to become a city with stronger communities and fight poverty and improve economic inequality so that our whole community has stronger bonds and more personal resources so that people can respond when, when bad things happen. And so that's how the sort of name change came about from Community Services to Resilience and Community Services. And really, we're just branding ourselves as the agency that's most primarily tied to this One Hundred Resilient Cities effort. So that's just a little bit about our new name and why it's chosen and how, how we connect in. But really, the, the role I described where we fund these nonprofits. One other thing I, I should have mentioned that we do is we've talked in the previous slide about the micro business loans and the business training. My department handles that also using CDBG funding. So we have a micro business program, which provides small loans to low income owned businesses to help those businesses either do rehabilitation or to expand their inventory, modernize, and do other things to become more prosperous and more successful. And those loans come with a lot of supportive services and training and coaching to help the businesses succeed. And that's been a, a successful program that we do. So really, three things we do in my department. Administer the long-term housing to formerly homeless, give out sub recipient grants to nonprofit organizations, almost entirely related to homelessness, and administer the micro business program. And I'd be glad to take any questions if people have any of those aspects of what our, of what Resilience and Community Services does.
May I lead off with the questions?
Please.
So for, for a small business, does the business have to be in existence to apply for the loan? Or can someone that's looking to build a business apply for a loan?
I, I believe, you know, I'm not involved directly with, you know, the specifics for the micro business program. But I believe that they, well, I know that they do provide services for prospective small business owners. If nothing else, the training and the coaching and the trying to connect people to resources. The loans that they provide are, are small loans. And so I think not enough to start a business from scratch, but possibly in conjunction with some other funding sources, then they may be able to actually start a new business with those loans.
I've got one question pretty quick. If you talk a little about the World Neighborhood Places and provides, plays in providing sort of homeless and residents services.
Sure, thanks. So one thing that sets Louisville apart from a lot of other cities I've seen is that a lot of cities just take the money that the federal government provides for poverty programs and then that's what they spend. And they don't really add any local resources. The city of Louisville does provide quite a bit of just local taxpayer dollar general fund resources as well to our anti-poverty efforts. And so the Neighborhood Places are a series of one-stop shops throughout the, the community. There are eight neighborhood places and then two satellite sites where we partner with Jefferson County Public Schools, the State Department of Community Based Services, Centerstone, formerly known as Seven Counties, and in some cases, some other agencies. So that when a citizen comes in or a resident comes into the door, you know, all those, the health department, all those different resources are available in one area. And because we're co-located, we're more familiar with each other. We can do better referrals and help people to get a bundle of services from multiple agencies. And so the Neighborhood Places administrators are employed by our agency. And we sort of serve as the, the main kind of organizers of, of the Neighborhood Places. But one of the services they provide is eviction prevention if somebody is, you know, is pending eviction. They can come into a neighborhood place. And if they meet some pretty strict criteria, then they may be eligible to get some rental assistance. And then we try to use the local taxpayer dollar funds for that in conjunction with Community Service Block Rate, which is another funding source. And that's one way. We don't spend a lot of our, one of the possible functions, as you saw for ESG, is homeless prevention. We generally do homeless prevention in Louisville mostly with local taxpayer dollars. And we do very little ESG prevention. The one exception is we have a grant to Legal Aid Society who use the funding we provide to help provide legal assistance to people who are pending eviction. So if they've got a dispute essentially with their landlord, then Legal Aid Society uses that funding to provide an attorney to help counsel the tenant on what their options are to avoid eviction if they, if they're in a disagreement with their landlord. But other than that, most of our prevention is done through the Neighborhood Places mostly with local, local dollars. And ma'am?
Yes, when your micro loan, what's the minimum and what's the max of the loan? The amount of the loan?
That's a good question. I don't want to misspeak because, like I said, I'm not involved in the day-to-day operations for micro business. But I'll be glad to refer you to the good folks who run that program and they can answer all your questions.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
I can't even ask the man. Right first? No, sorry, can't see what's going on in the gossamer. We get these programs, because right now we getting people, we're getting people that come in goss. Gossamer, you getting this way to up there.
Yeah, so the meeting that we're having tonight to talk about the action plan is actually administered by the Office of Housing and Community Development for Louisville Metro. So I, I think that your question is probably going to be for the Housing Authority, for the Louisville Metro Housing Authority. And we, we're not representing the Housing Authority. Sometimes they come and participate in this meeting. But we talked a little bit.
They keep on coming home.
Oh, no, and we're so glad to have you. And we did talk.
Many concerns.
Sure, so what, what I love to do.
Why you to go with concerns of gossamer?
Absolutely, but not, but when we're done.
I don't have the other two.
Okay, so I'm not, at the conclusion of this meeting, absolutely, I can, I can talk to you and definitely get you in touch with the folks that you need to speak with at the Housing Authority. But no, the, the, the basis of this conversation tonight and presentation tonight is not directly related to the Housing Authority or to gossamer. Yes, ma'am, thank you for the question.
What about the development though of you guys, Beach of Terrace?
Yes.
In the Scott State Housing. So are you guys involved with all that?
So, so the, the outline that, that Curtis provided was, again, the Housing Authority is kind of a partner agency in that effort, but they're really driving it. The city was a partner in the application for that funding. But the Housing Authority absolutely is driving the redevelopment of the housing on site with their development partners and are definitely handling the relocation efforts for that. So again, those, I can certainly give you contact info for folks at the Housing Authority, but that, that's not in the focus of this conversation. Was there, it sounds like there may have been.
Okay, but that being said, you guys are part of the development. How many people, if you guys turn Beach of Terrace down, we raised Beach of Terrace, how many of those residents are going to be able to afford to come back to that development that you're putting out?
I don't have specific information about the redevelopment effort. The, the, the specific investment that our department is making is really in the infrastructure part of that development. So I don't, I don't have those details here for you tonight. And again, I can certainly connect you with the folks that have those specific answers. I just don't have them for you tonight.
Those have been some of the, even about all the development, Scott State Housing has been the issue since day one. Each one, each project that you've raised, you send those, you mean, you send those people out into other communities. See, you took those same residents that had maybe two or three generations of living in public housing and put them into, now you put them into a residential environment that they have never been involved with. So now you got those failures. And they didn't last in those communities that you put them back into or you sent them out to because of, there's no educating those particular residents on being homeowners or outside of the Housing Authority. You took those same people, which were connected with Housing Authority for two generations, and now you made them so-called citizens. And they weren't prepared to be citizens. So your development, get great for the city of Louisville. You, you raised Beach of Terrace, which now looks great. And then you got all these homes available or whatever you have going on. And now those same people that are there are no longer. They're pushed into the other communities. And we got this great development that you did nothing for the people that you replaced it with.
And those are all homeless now.
Because now you can go into any neighborhood. Now you still mixture of people, all races, the kids and projects and stuff. And now you, you kind of did a mix because Beach of Terrace went through, and you, when they did.
Very closely.
Doval and your voice. So now you moved into another project housing. Now you have to issue.
Then you turned it down.
You have gang issues and you have people that had to come together. You had to actually do a double tattoo for some gangs. But if there was an issue from that particular area, now you'd have brought another area in, a conflict, a major conflict. Because I was actually the director of boxer for years and years. And even in a summer camp setting, our day-to-day setting, five percent of the kids that live in, right there in Beach of Terrace, did not utilize the facility of the rent center of Beach of Terrace because of what, what was created by the city. By moving, just moving feet back to the gym. So you created another dynamic.
Gossy, they have one to move out of.
Yeah, so that's some of the issues that we thought that we're going to get addressed tonight as far as.
Okay.
When you say development, it's great that you're doing the development, but that development leads to a ton of other in.
Because I really have to be right here gossy. What you going to me?
There are any issues.
I understand. I really appreciate that feedback. Again, that is not.
You got a couple of pretty gossy. And then moving everybody in. You trying to put more people in there. We got so many places. All the structures falling downs.
So again, I, I really appreciate you all sharing that with me. And I certainly will take that back to our, our, our friends at the Housing Authority. But we are not representing the Housing Authority. I don't work for the Housing Authority. Nobody in this room does. So I really appreciate the feedback that you're providing. And I will share that with Tim Marion and his team. But I, I just. Ma'am?
Tell me where to go. I got to say, we should sound that.
Okay. Well, sure, sure. I mean, so this is being recorded now. So I mean, you're more than welcome to, to sign up if you'd like to make some additional comments afterwards. You know, but again, I can provide the contact information that the Housing Authority for you all to follow up with. And if you want to give me your contact information, I can share it with our friends at the Housing Authority as well, okay?
I was just, I'm actually, I was just hearing two things just, just from listening to you. I was hearing, everything you guys were talking about, I was hearing somebody told me that those things going to be in a small business owner, about some of the other grants and stuff for housing issues. Because I know there are quite a few people who are, who are looking to start businesses and looking at different properties and looking for grants and those different things to, to operate under. So that's why, one reason why I'm here. But I was just listening to you guys and it seemed like this meeting left out a little bit of, you know, what you were going to bring about conversation.
Sure. So, so there are, there are a lot of community meetings and conversations about Vision Russell and about the Choice Neighborhood Efforts. I mean, there, there, I think that we've had like a hundred and fifty community meetings. So I, I really do appreciate your, your feedback and, and thought on that. And in subsequent years, because again, we've made a five-year commitment to this effort, I think we can certainly include more conversation about that in this meeting in subsequent years. I, I appreciate that. Yes.
So, I mean, one thing I've just added that you might, you know, so that you're, you know, that coming here is worthwhile is that if you guys submit a written comment or if you get added to the agenda to speak, then that will get included in the document that gets submitted to HUD. And so, you know, you can make sure, that's one way to sort of ensure your voice is.
This is not the first time, I'm sure, that it's other conversations. Because I've been actually not living in the community, but working in the community, doing a public service and with the programs that I run for youth, actually then directing Boys and Girls Club in the areas that you guys are talking about. So we've been in these conversations, these meetings for, 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 for years. But like I said, we keep hearing about development and development. But some of you guys, your, your development brings about other issues within the communities that are overlooked. And always, we just thought that it might have been a conglomerate, a group of people here that, you know, if you're saying, hey, we're putting up this structure here. So what's going to happen with the businesses, the, the mom and pop businesses from those areas? What's going to happen with the people from those areas? Because I, I was fortunate enough to take advantage of some of you guys' programs about the homeowners. Was able to be in your program, very nice home on Kelvin. And since then, just watching some of the other people that were in the same areas with us that actually wasn't successful enough to meet the practice of the program. And that, you know, they just left by the wayside. And so all I'm saying, as far as some of the other programs that have came about with development, that did come about, is some of the issues that are already just in the neighborhood are still not being, even though they have new development. But it seems like they're either being pushed a few blocks away or being pushed into other areas. Because it seems like one thing created, there's a good, good thing created. There are so many bad things that already existed that just got pushed further down. And, and I'm sure the mayor's aware of those things too. So, coming to a meeting like this, uh, you know, just hearing about some of your programs, it, it seems like there's a few agencies that could answer a few questions that go along with, with government and certain things too. Like I said, for years and years, and, you know, we did the summer meetings with, with two different areas, Madison and Madison City, that still bring about the same things, even though we have the change of rules. Rules being changed, with the skyline is different, uh, more things are being brought in. But, some of the same issues are just being stirred up still and just moved on. So, that's one of the things that we thought we were gonna get from the meeting. Like I said, I'm looking at two things, because I benefited from some of the programs that you guys have mentioned. But, there are so many other programs that get pushed by the wayside. Because I actually work with a, a company that we do the weatherization. So, when I go at your home and I go to my audit of the home, and I know I got X amount of dollars to spend, but we're still referring to some of the agencies that you guys have, you know, mentioned. With LGNE, um, uh, neighborhood waste, you know, we get weather, uh, we turn on the water heater, uh, weatherization on a home that may be needed. So, this is not the first meeting. And we said, maybe this, this, this more needs to be a more collective meeting, like more people. Because the, the same thing is one of the great, great that you raised in Beacher Terrace. It's overdue. But, what's gonna happen with those people? Uh, where are they gonna be? Scott State Housing has not been, uh, has not worked. Uh, there has not been enough studies and quick to move a family. And like you said, so many, a hundred some families were, uh, you know, relocated, you know, within the last, you know, few months. But, that relocation may have caused another issue in another area. And, did you just take a family that, with two or three generations in the project, and put them in a home setting, that they're not gonna be able to pay a regular LGNE bill and a water bill and a regular mortgage? And, how are they gonna, how are they gonna keep it up? Is there any program that's gonna assist them in educating them? Or, uh, giving them a better job? Or even getting them a job period? Because a lot of them, just, just to be real, they're not getting, they're not getting up into trouble one time. Kids are not going to school, there's not kids going to college. In that one area, so all you did was take something that relocated to another property. You got it out of the way, but, yeah.
And, sure, we're not speaking on the cap for all that change, but I will tell you that one thing is critical for the Detroit Neighborhood Project and the relocations that occur, and that are offered to every resident who will be relocated. It is, I'm gonna tell you, offer folks probably damage self-sufficiency program in case management is providing, whoever relocated, yes, and we talked about those services. So, I recommend that you have concerns about that, reach out to the Housing Authority and raise a specific issue to me and explain how that process works much more than telling me.
Let me ask you a question.
Uh, just another question. When you said the Housing Authority, Liberty Green, I don't know if Liberty Green fell into that.
Housing Authority, I always said that was the Housing Authority.
Because I was one of the first, I was one of the first three people that, you know, got a townhome there. And like I said, I'm not, I may not be like some of the other people that lived there. It was just a nice place, was located downtown as far as work and stuff. So, my family moved down, I'm one of three people. But, during the meeting, they're like, oh, we're gonna bring twenty percent of the people that live in the Quartier area, they're gonna bring them back to this area. It was like, gonna be like a Norton's Common. But, of course, that development changed. It didn't, what you promised us and what you showed us was two different things.
You see, it did not-
So, we're waiting and looking at this vacant lot outside my townhouse, waiting for the Norton's Common, same amenities that Norton's Common has, a community within a community. Now it took place. But then you decided to go with what you said was gonna take place. But, oh, we could bring in, put some condominiums down there so those doctors that are, you know, commuting every day further, we can put them right here into this community, so this changes. So, what we just said, our questions are, once you show us this beautiful plan, there's usually always a change. And, you know, it's, it's great. But, yet still, there's more to it than, you know, what we're saying, you guys.
Well, I wanna try to, I appreciate your comments, sorry. And again, um, what I wanna try to do is get back to, to the, the things that we came prepared to talk about tonight.
Just one last-
No, just, hold on, let me just, just make a point. Because I feel like I'm giving you, giving you a voice, okay? So, just let me add a couple of points. And it just, and I appreciate, look, it's, I appreciate every single person that's here tonight. Everybody, it's, it's seven o'clock, right? On a Tuesday or Wednesday, I'm not even sure which day of the week it is. But, everybody can be, Curtis brought his baby beautiful daughter. Everybody can be doing other things right now. So, I, the reason I want to allow him to speak and to share is because clearly, everybody that's here cares about our community. We care about our community because this is the work that we do. So, I, I appreciate all this. And I'm not trying to, I'm not-
I can go on, homeless.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to curtail your-
I can say good, Gus.
Your, your, your comments. But, I, I do wanna make sure that we present the stuff that we came here to present tonight. I just wanna talk about a couple of quick things and bring it back to what we were talking about. And, and the first of which is that, because a lot of what you're talking about is related to equity, and is related to resilience, and is related to, for sure, making sure that, uh, a lot of times, the, the term is used, um, in, in, in different ways, but to ensure that all boats rock. So, when, because what I hear you talking about is just making sure that the folks that live in, in, and if, if I'm mishearing this, then please correct me. But, that the folks that live in a community that is gonna be invested in or transformed, that they are not left behind in that transformation, that they have an opportunity to bear the fruits of that investment and of that transformation. And that speaks to equity and goes back to this idea of resilience and everybody being able to have a little bit of insularity and ability to not live on the margin, as it were, right? So, I hear what you're saying, and strategically, that's what as a community and certainly as an administration, we're dedicated to doing. The second point I wanna make is really related to, a lot of the instances that you provided, again, were, um, uh, vestiges of the HOPE six program. And one of the big differences, um, because what, really what you kept recounting was that, you know, in the past, this has happened, right? I, I guess what I would have to offer to, to that is that the whole fundamental, um, um, challenge presented by Detroit Neighborhoods Grant in this Vision Russell document, um, is to think about comprehensively the community and the, most importantly, the people in that community and in the neighborhood. Not just at Beacher Terrace, or not just at Carter Homes or whatever, that it is the entire neighborhood that we're trying to take, uh, a view of and strategically invest in long-term, right? So, it's a five or ten-year plan. So, I, I just wanted to make those two points. I, I really do wanna, I, I do wanna continue, because-
I understand, we, we understand it. I'm just letting you know that a hundred some people removed from there. You just crippled the people that normally walk toward Indy's, or utilize the YMCA. So, all I'm saying is that, you know, the research has to be a little bit more in-depth because of the simple fact that your new development, uh, will cripple the YMCA, will cripple the businesses here.
That's surprising.
When people walk out, and, 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 I mean, I'm just saying it needs to be a little bit more in-depth. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. And again, I'm, I've taken notes and will share that, um, with the Housing Authority. And then I'll give you guys contact information, first and foremost, for additional information. I could be that active meeting, ma'am, thank you so much. Because I, I wanna make sure that, in, in the interest of time, I wanna respect everybody's time that's here. We set a certain amount of time, we have a room set up for a certain amount of time. So, Andy hadn't gotten to brag yet, and he hadn't gotten to talk a little bit about what their plan is, uh, for the upcoming program year. So, if you could pick up there, would you be-
Oh, sure, well, I was, I was, I was, I was pretty much done. Like, as I said earlier, in terms of-
We've got a couple of slides.
In terms, in terms of, um, the next year's funding, in, in most respects, we're simply continuing, continuing to fund the subrecipient agencies that had been funded before. There's a couple of exceptions where agencies had not applied and new agencies are, are added. But, in most cases, it's, it's generally the same funding as before. Um, the, there is a, um, we just recently learned that there's gonna be a substantial amount of additional ESG funding that we, even after the Metro City budget had been passed and put in, into effect, HUD announced that we were gonna be getting additional ESG funding. But, this happened so late in the game that we're gonna have a separate process to, um, um, award that funding and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, a separate, like, public comment period, um, for that. Because it's, you know, it happened so late in the process that it's, it's gonna be done, you know, on its own. Um, so, I don't wanna relate too much about it here, except just sort of as a, um, sort of advertisement, that there will be later community conversations on how to spend this additional approximately half a million dollars of ESG funding that the city's going to receive. And so, the discussions are still going on now. The very earliest discussion's about what to do with this additional money, but it's, it's one-year only, one-time only funding. So, we can't start a new program that's gonna continue. It's gotta be sort of a one-and-done, um, surge of funding that is gonna go away after, after the, the grant period's over. So, um, with the exception of that unexpected windfall of additional money that will be discussed at a later time, our processes and our programs essentially continue as they have in, um, last year with a, a couple minor changes in terms of the specific agencies, subrecipient agencies that get funding.
Okay, you did take your, you did take advantage of your opportunity. Right, so we're gonna, um, skip, you know, we're gonna skip those accomplishments. I think there's one more slide related to Andy's, um, work. Anybody have any, uh, additional questions for Andy? Because I'm gonna let him get off the hot, hot seat and continue the, the presentation. Awesome, I, I really appreciate it, thank you so much. Um, uh, I'm gonna really start to, to talk a little bit more specifically about the upcoming year and the work that we're gonna be doing. So, again, I talked a little bit, um, about the neighborhood approach and the community approach to Detroit Neighborhoods, right? So, um, as part of the work that we do in our shop, we have designations that are called Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Areas. Um, last year, we had, oh, what check? Oh, I didn't know you had your hands on it, I just saw a computer moving. I thought Curtis was pulling it off the table. Um, this NRSA funding or designation, you know, we designated Russell as a strategic area, um, strategically, no, no pun intended, because of Detroit Neighborhood Grant. So, what that allows us to do is, um, not only to, to, to make this CDVG investment infrastructure, but also to, um, target additional funding for the entire Russell neighborhood, um, uh, around home repair assistance, uh, around incentives to attract new homeowners to the neighborhood, um, attracting businesses to the neighborhood, small businesses, um, getting started in the neighborhood, and vacant abandoned properties and strategic demolition of those vacant abandoned properties that are, and, you know, currently just blank in the neighborhood, numb blocks. Um, so, just a quick breakdown of, of the community development activities. Again, we've discussed the commitment that we've made to infrastructure improvements as part of the Detroit Neighborhood's effort on the Beacher Terrace footprint. Um, beyond that, we're also gonna be focusing on strategic demo of vacant abandoned structures across the neighborhood as well. We talked about affordable housing as being one of the, the, as being the leading strategic initiative for our efforts across the five-year plan and the one-year action plan. So, that includes promoting and sustaining homeownership opportunities. So, that's down payment assistance, which allows income-eligible households to purchase homes. But, it also is centered around repair and rehab programs that we have for folks to maintain the homes that they already have and to, uh, undergird those homeownership, uh, 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 opportunities that already exist, just to make sure people can stay in their homes. Uh, so, home repair and rehab, homeownership counseling. We also do, uh, uh, have a program that provides a barrier removal and, um, rent, um, installation into houses. So, the folks can stay in their homes, um, if for some reason they have, um, some physical, um, needs that would otherwise, uh, push them to, to move out to something that's more accessible for them.
Do you guys work with Habitat for Humanity?
For that particular work?
Yes.
No.
It's a center for accessible living, right, so services.
Um, so, um, we're gonna be focusing, um, some dollars for homeowner rehab and for this homeownership that's at this program, which is based on folks buying existing homes and fixing them up to get them up to standard, uh, to move into. Next slide, please. We're also focusing our, some small business development activities. Andy talked about this, this work goes through their shop. Um, through our economic development, um, folks, uh, will be focusing on micro-business and business loans, uh, incentives for, um, for larger amounts. Again, I don't have the, um, maximum and minimums, but we can get contact information for you, for the folks that had specific questions.
For, uh, larger businesses, larger small businesses that are looking to expand or relocate efforts in the rest of the neighborhood, uh, the economic development part. At Louisville Metro, we offer loans up to fifty thousand dollars.
Do they want to be matched? Do I have to have fifty to get fifty?
They, they underwrite each loan individually, so that would be part, part of your work with the economic development part.
Okay, I wrote that one down, okay.
Um, so, um, a, a little earlier, I mentioned that we would be talking about the timeline attached to all these disparate activities, seemingly. Um, we had our first public hearing back at the end of February, uh, at which, you know, we, we talked in general terms about this process and this timeline. Um, then we had a, a meeting in the spring that, that, that covered a draft plan. It was very similar to this meeting, and then had a comment period. We had, um, a second public hearing later that month, and had another comment period. And this, um, is actually the third public hearing that we've had. Um, we'll have a, a comment period through the end of this month available, again, by mail or by, uh, electronic submission, um, for any comments that folks have. And then we will be submitting our plan to HUD, um, in the middle, beginning of August.
And if I could just add one thing, uh, this year is different than most. Um, as some of you might have heard, Commissars way behind on appropriating funds this year, several months on it. In most years, uh, we typically will review two public hearings. The first one will be, uh, late February, early March, and the second one typically in mid-April, at which point we will then submit the plan to HUD in May. Uh, we didn't find out how much money we're getting from HUD officially until mid-June this year. Uh, so, as part of that process and a late timing, uh, they required us to do this third public hearing. So, this, uh, June, July public hearing will not typically occur in most years. And as Mr. Bates indicated, because we just learned about additional funding coming in, there will be a fourth public hearing this year. But, uh, again, those last two public hearings, uh, are out of the norm. And that fourth public hearing will deal explicitly with the additional ESG funding once that is finalized.
So, thank you, Curtis. So, just, um, this is information about where you can take a look at the draft plan. How many pages is it?
Thirty-five.
Okay, so it's not a short read. Um, but we've got, so, this is the electronic link on our website. And again, if you just start at LouisvilleKY.gov and go to our, our department, um, there's a, a menu on the left side of our homepage for our department, and it'll, it'll show you where the plans and, um, notices are. So, you can see it electronically there, you can download it, you can print it at home. You can go to, um, any of the, the public library branches, to the neighborhood places, the Edison Center, which is where Andy's, uh, team is located, uh, over. Is that still technically old Louisville? I certainly think of it as old Louisville.
I call, I call it Louisville too.
All right, well, it's in the seven-hundred block Hornsby Avenue. Um, they've got a really cool spot over there now. And then at our offices, our offices are at the Metro Development Center, which is the four-four-four building on South Fifth Street. Um, we're located on the fifth floor, and we've got a hard copy there as well. The next slide just, um, lets you know how, and we can leave this slide up, frankly. We don't, uh, we don't really, we don't really need to go to, to any of the other ones in case anybody wants to write this information down. This, this provides you with, um, Melinda's, uh, contact information if you wanna hardmail a letter to us. Also provides her email. Again, this comment period is open until August first. Now, that's for the official comment period in terms of us submitting stuff to HUD. You can reach out to us at any time. We, we don't have an official comment period. We're open twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. So, um, I, I think that, I, I don't know, Curtis, if you could check, I don't know if anyone has signed up to speak tonight, but at this time-
Wallace, Wallace has you.
Okay, great.
So, Wallace McBowlin, uh, from SolarArb of Louisville has a question, might comment, if you could give him a hot seat, Dave?
Absolutely.
Wallace, uh, the floor is yours. We ask you to try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Um, I've had about six hundred words, and I can't talk that fast.
Okay, comments pertaining to-
Okay, comments pertaining to the Louisville program, your draft action plan for HUD programs. So, Louisville strongly believes that this plan is missing the possibility to benefit from a stronger focus on sustainability in general, and a potential to benefit from solar energy onsite generation in particular. While rain gardens, soccer deals, and fitness paths have merits, they do not lower the residents' cost of living. Only one project, Shepherd Square, includes solar energy production where the potential, where has the potential for savings from solar is vast. According to the Community Power Network, low-income families spend 15% to 20% of their income on energy bills, which puts a big strain on their finances. With the addition of solar and weatherization, low-income residents receive their energy bills drop, and the onsite generation will ensure fewer effects of the rising energy costs. In many cases, the cost can be lower to only the minimum LGNE electricity charge, which is currently about $12 each month. This makes energy more affordable to low-income residents, and frees up money each month for other essential needs. Solar has long been perceived as too costly for low-income residents. We argue that the low-income population has a lot more to gain from onsite electricity generation than wealthy residents. Overall, all citizens should have the opportunity to take advantage of renewable energy incentives and initiatives. These initiatives further benefit communities by providing energy without the burden of polluted air and water. Another benefit solar provides to the community is that most solar installations perform by small businesses that hire locally. So, a robust solar program can boost the economy, provide training and employment opportunities in the very areas where the technology is being installed. Low-stable energy costs also benefit landlords because they help keep turnover low. In 2015, Louisville's Metro Council passed a resolution supporting the future and implementation of solar energy in metro Louisville. Then in 2016, Mayor Fisher joined with mayors across the US in committing to a climate compact to inventory and develop a plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and in 2017, to support the Paris Climate Agreement. While these are important steps, the city has not incorporated significant goals to increase solar energy in its metro draft program, your action plan that we're talking about tonight. The mayor has told me that he wants to see solar incorporated in the Russell Neighborhood Revitalization effort. We don't see that reflected in this document. In the last decade, the cost of solar energy has dropped precipitously, and solar energy today can be spainably in cost with all other forms of energy. When the 30% federal tax credit for solar and available financing are factored in, many people find they can pay for solar system over a 10-, 12-year period through money saved on the electric bills alone. Once the system's paid off, the savings accrue rapidly. With solar panels typically being warranted for 25 years and expected the last 50 years, beyond immediate savings, the long-term return on investment is quite high. It's time for the city to incorporate specific means to increase solar in Louisville into its metro action planning process. Many of the goals specified in the current draft plan, as shown on page three in the executive summary, should include specific plans to increase solar. For example, the improved existing owner-occupied units, providing improvements to public facilities, improving shelter operations, the micro-enterprise development, the small business development, the expanding homeownership opportunities. And we would suggest a preference be given to purchasing energy-efficient or energy-generating homes. And weatherization is defined as assisting with insulation, weather stripping and repair, or replacement of energy systems. Here, adding solar can be a part of the replacement of energy systems. And following grants, which is everything we've heard about tonight, have room for purchasing solar installations, the CDVG, The Home, Louisville Cares, the Choice Neighborhoods, and Transformation. Potential ways to incorporate funding requests to build solar capacity in Louisville housing include through pilot projects, many grants, revolving loan funds, local solar job training programs, and other implementation strategies. Solar of Louisville offers to work with the city grant developers to decide on specific mechanisms to support installing solar energy for low-income residents of grant services. Now, to me, it seemed odd that we were supposed to come tonight and comment on a plan that was just released today. I now kind of understand this is more sort of an open house, really, it seems like, than actually hearing the comment on a steady plan.
So, this, so the draft plan actually was initially released in?
I'm commenting on the April 12th version. You released the new version today, which only Andy is. I was at a meeting all day in Lexington, certainly had no chance to look at it. So, I, I had to write that before I came, it'd make a little more sense, than here, that you sort of laid out what you're doing. And, but I guess I also would just observe, we've sort of been trying to figure out how we get into the planning processes, and it seems like we've been knocking on the glass door, not going getting inside. Certainly, I learned about coming tonight, and hopefully, we're going to have continued interaction. So, I thank you for your attention to my comments.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers tonight, Curtis?
If anybody else signed up, is anybody else presenting, might comment? All right. Now, one thing I would ask for everybody that's sitting here, if you've been on your way to the door before you leave, if you'd kindly sign your name and contact information, so we have a record, if you're attending, it would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Great. We really appreciate everyone coming out. Now, that concludes the formal presentation of the action plan. But we're going to hang out for a little bit. We've got cards up front. There are a couple of folks I wanted to follow up with, to make sure we get your contact information, and get the right feedback from you. So, again, thank you all so very much for coming out tonight. I really appreciate your presence and participation.